I now call the order, the meeting of May 12th, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Nettie Pigian.
President.
Kenneth Barron.
Here.
Thomas Berry is absent. Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a quorum?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Bill Eby to please stand up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
And Ken, you want to...
Well, thank you very much, Council Chair, Mayor Pleco, other members of the City Council, City Clerk Bushevitz, and our lustrous Treasurer, John Riley, who's in attendance, and those in the audience and those watching at home. Tonight's a very special night. Tonight, we're going to honor and recognize one of the many individuals I've met over my recreation career here in Dearborn Heights, which has spanned 28 years. And this gentleman I met 27 years ago at one... Oh, no, I take it back. It was actually 28 years ago we met. It was my first official council meeting. And this is Bill Eby. He's one of our Recreation Commissioners, and at that time, he was president of the Crestwood Little League, which is now the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League. And he was in the audience, and I didn't know he was there. And then, at the end of the meeting, he got up and said, "I'm Bill Eby. I'm from the North, or from the Crestwood Little League. I'm the president, and I'm just here to ask City Council and the city officials to try to do more for our youth in Dearborn Heights." And he didn't say "the baseball program," he said "the youth." And I thought that was kind of neat. So, at that time, Mayor Van Houten said I was the new Recreation Director to get with me and see if we couldn't open up some discussions. And so, we did that. And about a year later, he had stepped down as president of the Crestwood Little League, and I thought, "What a great opportunity." I had an opening on the Recreation Commission, and so, I contacted Bill, and I said, "Would you like to stay in Recreation?" And he said, "Yes, I would. I just don't have the time to give to a Little League program," which does take a lot of time as a president. And he joined our team, and that was 27 years ago, in 1987, and he remained on the Commission through 2014, being a very active, a very knowledgeable individual in the area of Recreation, and has really worked with our entire staff and the entire Recreation goals that we have had. We were very similar in goals and looked at things very similar, but yet, we had some other discussions when there was some conflict. And that's kind of, you know, how you get better, when you have people and you have open discussion, and you have different views, and then you evaluate those views, and then you make decisions that are best for the community and for the department. So, at this time, we would like to recognize Mr. Eby for the years that he served on our Parks and Recreation Commission. So, if I can have Bill come forward. If I could have Mayor Pleco and Council Chair, would you like to come forward too?
Sure.
We have a plaque. You know, we wish, sometimes, we wish you could give you a car. Yeah, I know you'd love to have my sports car, wouldn't you? Unfortunately, it's not in our budget, and we're going through budgets now, but...
I did bring a Maxxbox.
There you are. But we have a plaque that we'd like to give you as a memento for the years that you... And it says, "Presented to William," and we know him as Bill Eby, "in recognition for your contribution to the improvement of the quality of life for the residents of Dearborn Heights as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for 27 years, from 1987 through 2014, serving as chairman from 1989 through 1994." And I also want to mention, as chairman from 1989 through 94, he also was the adult beverage chairperson for the Spirit Festival. So, he had, he also put time in there and did a great job for us there. So, Mayor, I will hand this to you, and you can handle the presentation.
Wilson. It's indeed a pleasure, and we also should thank your family, because all the sacrifices and everything. And, but you've done a great job for the city. You've done so, in youth programs, you're the best. And thank you for everything that you've done. And this is a small token of our appreciation, but it comes from everybody's heart.
Thank you very much. And just in closing, I just want to say, I've been very proud, not only to be associated with this man on a professional level, but I'm very proud to call him my friend. Bill?
Thank you.
Do you want to get some pictures?
Thank you.
Just come right up here. Oh, you got it? Sure. Want to state some pictures? Come on up.
You got it? Okay. You guys see doing the beer this year at the Spirit Festival?
I hope so.
Even though he's, you know, he's stepped off, I know he'll be back.
Oh, I agree. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
December 31st.
And, behalf of all my colleagues, and I give you thanks for all the service that you've done for us. We do appreciate it very much. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business, May 12th, 2015, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes, 4A, the minutes of regular meeting of April 28th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that the minutes for the regular meeting held on April 28th, 2015 be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilman Epigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five is a public hearing, 5A, the 2015-16 Corporate Fund Budget. Mr. Clerk, will you please take, or will you please read the notice?
Notice of Public Hearing, 2015-2016 Corporate Fund Budget, City of Dearborn Heights. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, at 8:00 PM, in the council chambers located at 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, for the purpose of hearing objections, if any, to the proposed budget for the City of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year 2015-2016. The property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. A copy of the budget will be available for inspection at the Office of the City Clerk, 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. This notice is published and posted by direction of the City Council under and by virtue of the City Clerk. Signed by myself, published on April 15th and April 22nd, 2015.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone wants to bring any comments, or they can come up to the microphone. Is there anyone at this time that wishes to make any comments on the upcoming budget? Anyone else? Come to the microphone.
Yes, Troy Brown, Hanover Street, Dearborn Heights. I was wondering, I don't see any references at all in the budget to interfund loan, interfund loans, and what we're going to take from the different funds concerning that. Is that not part of the budget, interfund loans that we...
It's really not part of the budget. We do pay interest on it, but John, if you want to, I know you gave us a presentation a few weeks back, what you were thinking. And maybe grab the microphone or go to this mic.
I mean, the budget is for revenue and expenditures that, you know, revenues we receive, expenditures we pay out. The interfund loans is not an expenditure. I mean, we receive the funds and we pay it back approximately within 60 days with interest, as the chairman stated. So, basically, it's not a budgeted item, because it's not necessarily an expenditure.
Okay. Okay.
We have questions for John.
Oh, okay. John, come up to the mic so that it can be recorded and heard.
Suzanne Todd, I have a question. Now, I'm aware that we borrow the money from usually the water fund, pay it back with interest, but isn't that interest that we're paying back, that is part of what the citizens are going, are paying with their taxes, is that extra interest?
Yeah, yes, I mean, but the law requires us to pay the fund that we're borrowing from interest, and so, we're required to do that.
I understand that.
Okay.
But we shouldn't be borrowing in the first place.
Well, unfortunately, we've gone from about $9.5 million to borrowing, down to, at this point now, it's below $2 million. When I came before the council, it was at 2.4 million. So, it's going to be below $2 million, as the projections show. So, as the general fund, fund balance grows, the need for the interfund loans will decrease. And that's what's been happening over the last three or four years, as the finances of the city have stabilized.
So, in other words, you're saying that for these years, the balance, the budget has not really been balanced, because it needed to be funded by another loan, and in the process, we've also paid interest on money that is ours. We're paying more interest on it.
We're required by law to have a balanced budget.
Yeah, the fund's balanced, what that is, a cash flow item, because there's receivables that we can't, we don't collect. For instance, the state of Michigan, state shared revenues, the state doesn't, pays them in installments, and so, we don't get all the cash. But the fund, using accrual accounting, if you're familiar with that term, it is totally balanced.
Okay.
Actually, we're running surpluses.
Well, if we're running surpluses, then why are we actually borrowing from the water fund?
Because...
Seeing since our rates, our Dearborn Heights water rates are the highest in the cities around us.
I disagree, but it's not...
Well, I've got, I mean, you know, it's nothing to agree. It's the facts. I have the facts to support what I'm saying, so... Okay, that's all I wanted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Kaczynski.
Treasurer Riley is the expert on these issues, but as a citizen, I would rather pay the quarter percent interfund borrowing, rather than go outside house and have to pay a significant, significantly more interest expense than what is occurring here within house, so...
And the cost of that borrowing with attorneys and all of that, the city would have to, well, it would be quite expensive.
Yes. Thank you.
And the money's staying here, basically. Okay. Anyone else wish to bring anything before on the budget? Hearing none, a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Councilman Kaczynski, second by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that current claims, 6-1 through 6-20, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I have a question for Director Zimmer. On 6-7, we're doing street repair on Ann Arbor Trail between Beechdale and Inkster. With all of this Michigan road repair and Proposal A and Proposal B and blah, 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 in that proposal, even though it failed, there was some statements made that the contractors would be responsible for the quality of their work. That isn't how it's said, but that's how I interpret it, okay? Do we have anything like that in this kind of thing? Do we have any...
Maybe Dan Brooks could answer that better.
Whoever.
Yeah, they provide a maintenance and guarantee bond that's good for one year.
One year?
Right.
Let's try five or 10. I mean, there's already, there's already holes.
That's how the contract's set up.
There's already holes on 96.
Right.
Where they closed it down for a number of...
If you want a larger bond, we can work with Corporation Council and see what can be done.
I mean, one year, I think we should look into this, really. A big job like that? I'm not talking...
That is standard, that's industry standard, but we can always check to see if we can change that.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Mr. Brooks, who is, who is the oversight to determine the quality of materials that are going into these projects, and in view that there's only a one-year warranty, so to say?
They have a specification for the project. They do submit a mixed design for the concrete, and we do test the concrete as it is placed. We do take concrete cylinders, and we do break the cylinders, make sure they meet the specifications in terms of the compressive strength of the concrete. The, the contract is set up for 35 PSI in terms of compressive strength. The tests are coming back at like 4,500, so they're far exceeding the, their specifications.
Do you have any knowledge about warranties of construction, particularly roads in other states? I think Michigan is unique because of the configuration we have and the frost problems we're circulated, we're surrounded by water. What about other states? There has to be some kind of reliance on getting some support of a better warranty, and where would we go to get that?
Well, like I said, let me check into it and see what we can, see what's, what you can do as a city in terms of requesting warranties.
Councilman Coniston?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Coniston.
When I was State Representative, General Palladore and I introduced a bill to provide for award of attorney fees and some other things, because what happens is, for big road projects, it becomes incredibly expensive for the state to burn a proof, and it's just not economical. There are so many defenses and so forth. And I mean, you would have thought we lit somebody on fire. We had the road builders and different groups coming to visit us, and they were very, very upset with us, but it's, it's a big issue, and the, there are requirements that there be an underprivileged contractor on a lot of road projects and stuff, and they go out of business. It's terrible. It's an area that needs a lot of attention.
Councilman Epigian?
It's a, it's certainly an important issue, but I think the way we have to look at this, the more stringent you write a specification, just look upon it as you're getting a 20-year roof versus a 10-year or 15, when you're getting the guarantee, your bids are going to come in. So, the more restriction, the more restrictive you make your specification, the more expensive the bids are going to come in, and that's what's happening, unfortunately. It's too bad we can't do what they do in Germany and build a 40-year road. But if you look at it as a roofing problem, that's exactly what's happening. In other words, the costs go higher. But in my opinion, it's better to build a better road in 20-years-ago dollars, as opposed to replacing them twice. But there's things to be considered, and Mr. Brooks knows what he's talking about, but it sounds awful bad to have a 12-months guarantee, no question about it. Thank you.
And certainly, there are significant influences by the trucking industry, many of them being overweight. You can go up and down Beechdale or Telegraph and pick them out eyeball, in spite of no enforcement and checking weight, so it's a two-edged sword, the destruction by the kind of equipment that is rolling in the city, all across the state, plus the warranty of one year, so the lobbyists have a very powerful hold on our, on our, on our tie and our throat.
Mr. Chair? Councilman Coniston?
Mr. Zimmer or Mr. Brook, how often do, is there a claim against a bond? Have you ever seen any at all in the, like, against a performance bond?
Well, it does occur, because usually, the contractor will take care of it for the first year, because they don't want a bond to hold, and the bonding company have to do some work, and then the next project they work on, their bonds will be more expensive. Usually, when they have to, get into the bonding company to do our business, the contractor will represent us, and we'll give them a bond if there's some...
How often does that occur? Like, almost never?
It does occur. Like, the contractor that did belly road about four years ago, after the job was completed, they did love it, but yeah, they did them, but the bonding company did have to clean up.
Anything more on current claims? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, reports from Mayor, 8A, from Mayor Pleco, preparation of letter ruling for the Internal Revenue Service by Platten Moran, P L L C, to retain Chief Brogan as Fire Chief.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move, as the council moved this item to a study session, to discuss this whole program with Chief Brogan in attendance, and possibly the union president. There've been a number of questions brought forward on this situation, and I would like it thoroughly discussed before we pass anything on it.
Second. Okay. Second by Councilman Epigian. Is there any discussion? Then I'll set this up as soon as we can do that.
We still got one more budget issue to detail after the budgetary period, after the budget deliberations.
Let me set this up. Oh, yes. Yep. Yep. Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine, reports from City Official, 9A, from Council Chair Barron, requests for temporary permit for selling fireworks. At this point, I've had much discussion with our city attorney, Gary Miyaki, and he will explain what he has found out, and then we will... Gary?
Thanks. Basically, what we're looking at in this situation is these matters had previously been dealt with by the ZBA, and then Mark Roberts raised with me a question of interpretation of Section 36254, which has to do with temporary structures and uses, and I agreed with him that a proper rule, or a proper reading of this ordinance would require the City Council to end up approving these types of items. And the reason why it has to go through this type of review is that essentially, the state fireworks law, specifically Section 7 of it, provides, except as provided in this act, a local unit of government shall not enact or enforce an ordinance code or regulation pertaining to, or in any manner regulating, the sale, display, storage, transportation, or distribution of fireworks regulated under this act. However, we can enforce things that don't have to do specifically with fireworks, and that's what Section 36254 provides. Subsection E has to do with special events and other temporary uses, and basically, it says that the City Council may grant a temporary use of land and structures for special events and other temporary uses, subject to the following general conditions. A, adequate off-street parking shall be provided. B, the applicant shall specify the exact duration of the temporary use. If the duration of a temporary use does not exceed five days, including setup and breakdown, City Council review is not required, and the use may be reviewed administratively by the building official. C, electrical and utility connections shall be approved by the building official, which, if they've already been approved by the state, then that would pretty much be preempted. And then, the City Council, the zoning board of appeals, or where applicable, the building official may require a performance bond to assure proper cleanup, according to subsection 3672. I've looked at what was originally submitted, and we don't have anything that really addresses these particular issues. It's my recommendation that you move this matter to a study session, so that, to make sure that everything that is necessary is obtained with respect to this. And even the new materials that have been provided raise certain other issues as well. For example, the, the application with respect to Hype raises issues about a for-profit business potentially ending up using what is otherwise would be public property, but for the transfer to Hype, but that's specifically limited for the particular purposes that were included within that deed, if I recall correctly. So, to have a for-profit company come in and end up using part of this property, which was otherwise parkland and then became Hype property, but was subject to certain other legal restrictions, raises an issue in and of itself that goes even beyond this, which is a rather potentially complicated issue. And the main issue that is likely to come before this body is making sure that whatever happens with respect to these applications, that there is sufficient parking, because this has been an issue in the past with the ZBA, that you put a tent in the middle of a parking lot, and now, all of a sudden, you don't have enough room, not only for the patrons who are coming to go to the tent, but also for the normal patrons of the store. And that is something certainly that can be looked at by this body, and determining whether or not the, the application should be granted. And if the individual applicants need to, they can end up contacting me. My sense is, is that it would probably be best for me to end up talking to them about the particular items that I would suggest that they have, that they can gather these, and then that the Fire Chief, or the Fire Marshal, or whoever else would be appropriate, and the, you know, Mohammed would end up basically being able to look at some of these things, or perhaps someone, Ricky from Mohammed, would be able to look at some of these things if, if, if he feels that's appropriate.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I was going to make, may I make a motion to move...
We do have a motion.
Do we have a motion? I think it was...
No, you didn't make the motion, too?
Attorney.
No.
Yeah, there's no motion.
You said that you had some discussion with Councilman Miyaki, and that's how this all started.
Oh, okay.
And he told us what...
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry. To move item 9A to study session, please.
Support.
Second by Councilman Coniston, and I will let everyone know and the applicants too for that, and have that as soon as we can.
It's a very good idea.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
Administratively, because the City Clerk and I had a discussion, and I think somewhere in this process, we need like an application, because people who came in to apply ended up like in limbo, because we weren't really certain how we should do this administratively. So, I think it's important that we don't have people bouncing around all over in the city, that someone needs to prepare an application. And I, I mean, I don't know, but you had some thoughts on parking and others, so, I mean, administratively, we're willing to assist, but maybe, Gary, if you gave us some items that we could ask and have the applicant fill out an application, because right now, we don't have an application for outdoor fireworks sales.
If I may, Mohammed, were there prior applications, or did you have some sort of form in the Building Department for these such things?
We always go through it to the ZBA.
Okay. Did the ZBA use some sort of form with respect to...
No, it's just a standard form of the application.
Oh, I see.
So, I'll just point out, we need one.
Okay.
Because I think a form similar to be like, okay, you get it from the clerk's office, the Building Department will approve it through whatever means, whether it's ZBA or so forth, and then the Fire Marshal, you know, or the Fire Chief would approve that to make sure all the proper suppression, or whatever they need for that is, and whatever other departments would be, yeah, for parking. And, of course, the Building Department would know parking spaces and what's needed by the business that's there, and how much it's going to take up, and the size of the tent, and those type of things.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Kaczynski.
Was it said that previously, the ZBA heard these cases? And if that's the case, are we now intruding on their responsibility by taking, taking on this study session to, to determine what direction we should go in?
No, as long as the use exceeds five days, which, from what I've... No, as long as the use exceeds five days, which, from what I've been able to see, the ones that we have received do exceed five days. And that was one of the things that was raised. Mr. Roberts felt, in looking at the ordinance, he's like going, you know, that language about the five days suggests that the approval has to end up going through. And I was like, you're right, so, he said, well, we're gonna have to change the process and make sure that it ends up going to the city council instead of going to the Z B A.
Okay.
We could change the ordinance if, if this body wanted the ordinance changed to have something like this go to the Z B A, and this ordinance could end up being changed to include, you know, like it has specific uses, carnival, sidewalk, Christmas tree, festival, something that might be a little more general and would fit this type of use, like tent sales or something along those lines, may not be a, a bad idea. I'm not sure exactly what it would specify, but it would be potentially useful.
Now, you're, you're venturing on, Councilor, you're venturing on to outside sales, Christmas trees and the like. Would that fit into that category?
No, actually, the, the chair suggested that I, I look at that issue, and having looked at that issue, and we've got a lot of definitions here, but I mean, essentially, the outside sales definition, which is not necessarily, yeah, open-air business, is not short, but basically, the general definition is open-air business use, uses means any business that is conducted primarily out of doors, so this is gonna end up being in a, in a tent. Unless otherwise specified, open-air business, business shall include, and then it talks about retail sale of garden supplies and equipment, including trees, shrubbery, plants, flowers, seats, lawn and furniture, roadside stands, outdoor recreation uses such as tennis courts, archery courts, shuffleboard, horseshoe courts, and then bicycle, trailer, motor vehicle, boats, or home equipment sales service, or rental services, outdoor display, and sales of garages, swimming pools, playground equipment, and similar uses. So I mean, it, it seems to me, at least my interpretation of this, would be that those items generally involve a lot more outside in terms of this, and that this would be within a tent, and I think that kind of does not allow, I, I just don't think that it falls within the, the scope of this.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Opieian.
Last year, when this fireworks new law came about, no one was happy with it. And when I first read this, I didn't know whether, you know, we could use, that we would have a prejudice against fireworks if it's allowed by the state. But we didn't have anything like this in the city limits of Dearborn Heights last year, did we?
No, we didn't.
Well, if we did...
Was there someone on?
If we did, I don't think so.
Two?
The fire chief would be...
There were two businesses last year that were certified through the state, but they weren't tent sales, they were inside of other businesses. That's the difference.
They weren't essentially outdoors.
Correct.
Which makes more sense than having all that stuff be in the building, if you ask me.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We're gonna have to talk about it.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine B, from ordinance enforcement director McIntyre, request to purchase tablets.
Mr. Chairman.
And accessories.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I move to approve Director McIntyre's request to purchase eight motion tablets, eight docking stations, eight carry sleeves, eight digital pins, one additional battery, eight twelve-volt adapters, and eight rugged jet pads for a total cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand fifty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, with a check payable to C D W Government upon delivery of the product as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Opieian. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Is Mr. McIntyre here?
Yep.
Yeah. There is a suggestion of using, the use of, used monitors. Is that gonna present a compatibility difficulty? No. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine C, from recreation director Gribble, purchase of chairs for the Richard Young Recreation Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Opieian.
I concur with our Parks and Recreation Director, Kenneth Gribble's recommendation to authorize the purchase of one hundred and forty-four folding metal chairs to the Beamic Incorporated Company located in Atlanta, Georgia, in the total amount of two thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Funds to pay for this purchase have been budgeted in the Richard Young Center capital outlay account, as illustrated in detail in attachments identified in nine C.
Support. Second by Councilman Constance. Is there any discussion?
Ten.
There was a typo, it should be ninety-one, since it's not thirty-nine. I put in a five, yeah. It was twenty-four, sixty-two, ninety-one.
Oh, it has ninety-one up top, but then, yeah, okay.
Twenty-four, ninety-one?
No. Twenty-four, seventy-two, ninety-one.
Right. Ninety-one.
Okay. Correction? Okay. Further discussion?
What was the number, twenty-four, sixty-two?
Twenty-four, sixty-two. I'm sorry, it's twenty-four, seventy-two.
Ninety-one.
Two thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Ninety-one cents.
Ninety-one cents.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine D, from recreation Gribble, director Gribble, disposal of one multi-station weight training unit.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Opieian.
I move to approve of Kenneth Gribble Park Recreation Directors' request to dispose of a multi-station weight training unit that was used in the Richard Young Session Recreation Center as outlined in item nine D.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine E, from police chief Gavin, approval for payments to Eastern Michigan University for staff and command classes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the payment to Eastern Michigan University in the amount of three thousand dollars for staff and command classes, as outlined in nine E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Constance. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Chief Gavin, this is an upfront expense, is it?
We have someone attending the class, so, you know, it's a bill we received, and we're paying the bill. So we presently have someone enrolled in the class.
Okay. But is there any, are there any details about successful passage, a passing grade to, to accommodate the expense tied to the city?
Usually, we have, in the past, we've been doing this for years, and we've had no problem with the officers passing. Presently, we have one enrolled in Eastern Michigan, and one in Michigan State, which is out in Troy. So we have two staff and command classes going presently.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine F, from fire chief Brogan, request to transfer funds from utility to repair and maintenance.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Opieian.
I concur with Fire Chief Brogan's request to transfer funds to cover some required maintenance estimated to need, the needs of twenty thousand dollars to make it through the rest of our fiscal year. The request is to transfer twenty thousand dollars from utilities account to the maintenance account, as outlined in detail in nine F.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine G, from Councilman Kozinski, request for information from community and economic development director Ayman.
Mr. Chairman, I had written a very exacting motion for this issue, mainly to avoid being presented with a thousand pages of reading, which absolutely wasn't necessary. If the instructions were followed, we probably could have got by with the fifty pages, so please bear with me. Move council, refer motion regarding nine G, of today's agenda, to the administration, specifically Director Ron Ayman of the Community and Economic Development Department, to furnish one copy of the contract for services, let's say format, a cover page, a properly executed and dated signature page with all of the required information from each of the four contractors identified in motion fourteen-four-oh-four. This information is to be submitted through the regular city council meeting agenda, scheduled for May twenty-six, twenty fifteen. That's, that's the substance of the motion.
Support. Second by Councilwoman Horvath. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I thought you were scheduling a meeting on the last motion, so we kind of, I, Mr. Ayman is on vacation. I assume that there's no difficulty in processing this, but certainly will make available any and all information to the council.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think I have a meeting specifically for that.
Mr. Chairman, there, there was discussion of a study session to entertain all of the details that have been given me in that famous collection of a thousand pages. I'm just about finished going through that, and I have learned a lot in that, but I want to be sure to have all of the ends tied up before we go into that discussion, and this is one of the loose ends that still remain. The contracts that were recommended to be approved on December nine under motion fourteen-four-oh-four have never been reviewed by the council, and I think that's an important aspect of good business and activities. I have been told on two separate occasions in contact with the C E D D department that, and this is as recent as February and March, that the contracts were still being reworked, and that was further confirmed by my contact with the contractors. There were no, there were no firm, firm commitments of contracts in place. So this is, in a sense, an attempt to bring these contracts to the council table, reviewed by the council members, and then moved from that point to the appropriate destinations, including the signatures of the city clerk and the mayor. That's basically the purpose of this. I'm trying to accelerate the process here. We, or at least the Community and Economic Development Department, are functioning, and the contractors are operating and being paid with federal funds on the strength of a council-approved contract way back in June of twenty-ten. The term of those contracts was three years. From June of twenty-thirteen to the present day, there is no real authorization for the contractors to be performing the work that they're doing. We have been told that as long as a contractor can do the work, they can do, they can do it. But in that kind of consideration, we are really skirting some restrictions of the charter, which requires contracts to be in place in order for anybody to do business for this community. So I ask you for your, for your support with regard to this motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, new business, thirteen A, business license renewal for Antonio's Cucina Italiana, two-six-three-five-six Ford Road.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constance?
I move that we approve the business license, business license renewal for Antonio's Italiana Cucina at two-six-three-five-six Ford Road, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ends our regular portion of our business. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Couple things. Do you have an announcement to make?
No.
Then I have an announcement to make. Ken Barron's florist is closing in June.
Ooh, what?
That's part of our retirement plan.
He's retiring in June. So order your flowers now.
Oh, goodness. I'm sorry. I have a couple other things. Today, kudos to the young man that stopped traffic on Beach Daily, just north of Riverside, to let three little tiny ducklings go all the way across Beach Daily into the park. He had the whole street shut down. And the other question I have for the mayor, back when the, I don't know, October, November timeframe, when we were having all the flooding, the August flooding situation, I had mentioned waiving permit fees for people that were, that had to do repairs to their homes. Did that ever happen, or did we ever get people that wanted to do repairs to their homes? Do, what, did anything happen with that?
We were never...
You got the mic, just saw that.
All the repairs that were done in that area, okay, we were never approached by anybody requesting a wave of a permit. And as a matter of fact, most of the work that was done by contractors.
And that pulled permits?
They pulled permits.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman, I, with regard to that motion that we just heard about, nine G, I meant to emphasize, this is kind of a postscript, this request is not gonna take more than eighteen or twenty pages, including nine pages of the boiler, boiler point, or whatever you call it, boiler print.
Boiler point.
Yeah, the, if you, if you get beyond eighteen pages, call me. Now, I'll give you some guidance as to what specifically we're interested in having, but it's pretty well clear in the motion what is, what is expected.
So maybe, Chris is still here, right? Clemcheck?
No, he left.
I mean, but, but, you know, he's not, Ron's on vacation, so...
Well, Ron will be back on Monday, so...
Oh, okay.
No, I, we probably, I'm gonna suggest that we call the councilmen, meet, and get whatever we want.
Sure. Okay.
So that there's, I...
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association would like me to announce that they will have a park cleanup on Saturday, May sixteenth, Daly Park, ten a.m. That's located at West Lake between Lehigh and I wanna say Hopkins. I had to remember where it was located. But again, that's ten a.m. at Daly Park, and they will be doing a cookout as well, so they'd like to invite everyone to that, to help clean up the park. And they also want to announce their meeting, they have a membership meeting, again, this is for the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, on Thursday, May twenty-first, seven p.m. at the Donovan Post on Van Born. And in addition, we would like to invite everyone to the Dearborn Heights Light Up the Night campaign kickoff, and that will be on Saturday, May twenty-third, eleven a.m. at Daly Park. And again, that's for everyone to come join us, we're uniting our community in the fight against crime. We have our school districts, the Dearborn Area Chamber of Commerce, the neighborhood associations for Dearborn Heights are coming together, again, just uniting our community in this fight. There'll be information tables there on the associations, as well as crime prevention. And we have Crestwood National Honor Society on hand, offering the children's activities, as well as Indianapolis High School Band, and some guest speakers. So again, we'd love to have you join us on May twenty-third, eleven a.m. I had one more thing, if I may, just, I had written a little note for our law enforcement officers to let you know, this is Police Appreciation Week, and they are never off-duty, they are dedicated public servants who are sworn to protect... dedicated public servants who are sworn to protect the public safety at any time and keep peace when it is threatened, and I just want to say thank you, because I know it's an ongoing effort that you, you know, offer to our community in this service, so thank you to all of our law enforcement officers.
Councilman Conson?
I'd just like to thank everyone from the Watershed Stewards who helped with the Ecorse Creek Cleanup, May second, we had over a hundred people, and pulled a lot of debris out of the creek. I'd like to especially thank Barb Gorka and Steve Roberts, Steve is here today for all the work they did.
Everybody.
Barb is just... Day in and day out, she works and Steve works, and they're a great team, they do a lot of work for the community, so thank you.
Okay, anything else from any council members? Mayor, do you have anything?
I just want to indicate to members of the public that next couple days, the parking lot had to be reconfigured because we're paving, doing the second part of the parking lot, so we're individuals that come to do business in the city, that is not going to be available, so that's...
The library, or...
They can still park, there still will be later traffic throughout the project that they will be able to access either way.
Okay, so you might not have been able to hear that, but there will be arrows indicating and you can, you'll be directed to park in the employee lot, and we'll have spaces available.
And the library is still real close, too, so...
Yeah, although the library gets packed at times, I'm not sure, but certainly, just, we're sorry for the inconvenience, but it's going to make the parking lot more user-friendly.
Yep, that's it. Then at this time, if anyone has any announcements, John?
I would like to make the council, mayor, public aware that people who have been used to paying their water bills and tax bills at Comerica Bank, they're no longer going to be accepting those at their local branches. I think this is a business decision by Comerica Bank, and so that's going to be discontinuing as of June first. Just in case somebody comes to you and say, why did the city decide not to do that, that was not our decision. Luckily, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, which is on Warren Avenue, and they also have a branch in Dearborn Heights on Telegraph Road, will, still will be accepting our water and tax payments there. You can also pay with the water, using the automatic, we will withdraw it from your account on the due date. We have over two thousand residents signed up for that particular program. We mail in, we mail you an envelope with your water bill, you can mail that back, or you can, a lot of people like to save the stamp and put it into our night deposit box, which is just to the right of front door of City Hall. You can go onto your banking, electronic banking at your bank, and you can make a water bill or tax bill payment there. The water bills come into us electronically, so we still don't handle any paperwork under that method. You can go online to our website, unfortunately, to use a credit card, there is an additional convenience fee charged for that, or you can always come into the Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office and see us face to face and pay in that method. So there's plenty of other ways to get your water and tax bills paid, it's just that the local branches of the Comerica Bank will no longer be accepting them as of June first. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, things happening in the city? Steve?
Well, Steve Roberts of Watershed Stewards, I want to say thank you, t-shirts out here if I can read it, to Mike's Bar Barbershop, Stud Hardware, Halls Brothers, Reynolds, Dmitri's Party Store, John Rowley, Treasurer, Bob Constand, Councilman McKinley...
McKenna?
McKenna.
Oh, McKenna.
Chickley's Custom Cakes, I think I said that right, and Creative Solves U.S. Thank you for your support, and thank Tom for getting all the money to make the...
Tom Winslow.
And thank you for all the Crestwood High School Honor Society, because they're the ones that are keeping up the rain gardens, and Steve Ray for helping them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any more announcements, things happening in the city going on? Okay, go ahead, Don, and then we'll get Mike after that.
Hi, my name is Don Revard, I live on John Daly Road. I'm here on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Lions Club. I want to tell you it's not too early for us to let people know, we're having our thirty-first annual golf outing on June twenty-sixth at Gateway Golf Course. This is our major fundraiser of the year. The Lions Club, as you know, supports projects to help the blind and the hearing impaired primarily, such as Leader Dog School, Michigan Eye Bank, Penrithen Center. We also help needy people in the community. Last year, we gave out twenty-five hundred dollar food cards from Kroger at Christmas to people that kind of slip through the cracks, that don't get taken care of by Goodfellows or other organizations like that. We also are, once again this year, are awarding three scholarships of a thousand dollars each to two graduates from, one to two, to graduates of the high school, two from Crestwood and one from Annapolis. All this work we do, everything we bring in goes to, back into the community, we don't keep any of it ourselves, so we're looking for sponsors or golfers on June twenty-sixth. Sponsorship is a hundred dollars, golfing is ninety dollars. June twenty-sixth, the Gateway, and I appreciate everybody's support, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks for all the work that the Lions Club does.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Hello, council chair and mayor, just wanted to mention a couple upcoming city events. First off, this Saturday, from ten AM to ten PM at Crestwood, we will be having our annual Relay for Life. Come on out as we walk and engage in fun activities to help beat cancer. We will be having an inflatable obstacle course, a pita food truck, and a bevy of other activities to make the day entertaining for all. Also, putting on my Kiwanis hat for a second, on Wednesday, May eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, the Kiwanis Rotary Lions and Goodfellows will be hosting their third annual Michigan Week Luncheon at Stitt Post at noon. Prices are twenty dollars if paid by Thursday, May fourteenth, or twenty-five dollars at the door. For more info or to purchase tickets, call Chrissy Laslow in the mayor's office at three one three seven nine one three four nine zero. That's all for now, thank you for your time, and see you at the library or on the Crestwood track. Have a good day.
Thank you. Luke Pachaves, you have a...
We had our election last Tuesday, we had a twenty percent turnout, consistent with the rest of the state. The good news is, we are going to be almost fully reimbursed for all our costs, I'm working on that as we speak. I just want to say, it takes an awful lot of people to put on an election, we had a hundred and forty-two people working on Election Day, and I want to thank them all. We had over a dozen new people, and we thank the new people for coming aboard, we always need more people. Please think about it for our next election in November. Also, it's a costly thing, just to let you know, the salaries for just Election Day alone were over twenty thousand dollars, so it's a costly thing to put on, and we thank the dedication of our people who worked from seven to nine, ten o'clock at night, and did a great job, and so our next election will be in November, and thank you, by the way, workers. The old adage, the check's in the mail, will be in the mail on Friday, please give us a week, the mail is not always there the next day, so before you start calling us, give us a week and see if your check comes in, and any other questions, concerns regarding anything concerning the election, you can always call us at seven nine one thirty-four thirty-three. Thank you very much.
Number of votes?
Okay, thank you.
Number of votes was somewhere in the neighborhood of seven thousand.
For twenty thousand, for twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Well, no, that's, that's only Election Day...
Expenses.
Labor cost, when you count in all the preparation, the envelopes, supplies, and everything else, I'm expecting probably double that.
Any more announcements, anything happening, things going on in the city? Seeing none, then at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. If you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, the department head, et cetera, let me know. I will ask if he or she would like to respond. Councilman Conson will keep time, you will have three minutes after you give your name, street, and the city that you reside in. When there's fifteen seconds left, he will hold up this sign, and when you have, are finished, he will hold up the stop sign. So at this point, if anyone has anything to bring before us, please come up to the podium. Ray?
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, good evening, everyone. Not a question, it's just what I feel about saying about the fireworks. It's getting close to that time again, and I think if you take a poll of the entire city, I'll bet you it's ninety-eight percent to ninety-nine percent, people do not want fireworks in our city. I'm sorry to the people who want to sell them, but I urge everybody to write your state reps, your senators, we need to have this stopped. I mean, the elderly can't stand the noise, I know I can't stand the noise, I watch bottle rockets flying on my roof and hope my house doesn't start on fire. Our pets are just petrified with these things, and it's a shame that a small group of people, a minority, get the rule over a large group of people that don't want fireworks, and I don't know what the hell has happened to our system of the majority rules, but it sure stinks right now, and I'm going to make my voice heard in Lansing in the next few days, because I'm sure going to get on my state rep about it. We need to do something about this, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, and the real difficult thing about the expansion of the fireworks law is they
restricted the city's ability to do anything over, you know, certain periods of time.
Yep. Okay, anyone else wish to make any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Troy Brown, Hanover Street, Dearborn Heights. If you don't mind, I'd like to just make three statements.
Sure.
Kind of old business questions that I haven't had answered, just topics that I think we need clarification on, so I can move forward as well as you. First of all, I want to hand this out to you, this is the proof that they are dumping sewage into the north branch of Ecorse Creek. This is SOS event on the Michigan State site, event sixteen one fifty-eight, Dearborn Heights reported it on eight eleven, two thousand fourteen, the outfall was five six hundred Jackson Street, the receiving waters were the Ecorse Creek North Branch, seventy, seven point two million gallons, and it was diluted sewage. So I just want to make sure that you, Mr. Chairman, as well as my fellow residents and the council members, understand, when I'm asking, what I was asking for back in March is not without fact, and it's certainly, this is just the tip of the iceberg, I believe. So that's that point. Moving to April fourteenth, when you made, Mr. Chairman, and you made the statement that all of our, all of our claims were unanimously denied, you made, you read that statement?
Say that, I said that they need to call.
You need, we need to email, we need the email, you gave us the email address, okay. So anyways, on that particular night, ironically, this body voted to pay CMDA, our lawyer, a fee for five thousand forty-eight dollars, and on that, there was two items where, and I know he's not here, and all due respect to Councilman Barry, he had two phone calls with the lawyer, and then he had one review meeting with the lawyer as it related to his claim. I feel disenfranchised and really disrespected, where I don't get to talk directly to our city lawyer, but a city councilman does. That's all I want to say about that. The final thought is, I also asked for help on some monies to help us in this flooding until we get it fixed, and I brought up the six point eight million dollar water fund, should say special levy in the water fund. This inner fund, you passed, this body passed borrowing from it, and by the way, earlier it was misspoken, you passed three point five million dollars, this body, they, you voted unanimously to borrow three point five million dollars, yet I'm being told that that's a restricted fund, and it can only be used for C S O improvements. So my concern is, did we as a city violate the bondholders by borrowing from it? And, more importantly, more importantly, did you know that as a council, that that was, there's restricted funds blended in there? That's all I have to say.
Okay, anyone else? No one else? Seeing no one else?
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Councilwoman Horvath?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, all in favor? Motion, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.